I'll call to order the City of Apache Junction Council Meeting to order. Invocation be led by Councilman Rizzi and the pledge will be Brayden.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being gathered here today to do the city's business on behalf of our constituents. We ask that each of us be guided by you, Father, in the decisions we make that will affect others and not by any personal agenda or ego. We ask to be humbled in our disagreements and that we never forget we are here to serve the people of this beautiful community. We continue to pray for Officer Bergman and his family as he continues to recover. Father, we ask for your protection for all of our first responders, those serving in our military and all of their family members. We ask that they be brought home safely each and every day. We also ask that you bless our community during this beautiful springtime and a little bit of rain would be greatly appreciated. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Biggs?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Here.
Councilmember Nessar?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Thank you. As a reminder, all items under the consent agenda will be approved by one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request will be made prior to the approving of the consent agenda and it will be moved into new business. Do I have a motion for a consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Okay, awards and presentation. We've got a big one tonight. A 25-year service award for the Police Department. Chief Kelly.
Newer Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff and citizens, tonight is one of those times that I actually take some pleasure in my job, that get to recognize an employee that's been with your city, my city, for the last 25 years. And she thinks she's going to hide in the back, but I'm going to have Celeste come up and stand by me so she can back me up for a change.
There she is.
But Celeste was, from what I can find in her, one of her personnel files, which I always bring with.
Uh-oh, it's pretty thick.
Originally came from Pennsylvania and worked out there for a while until she, for some reason, I'm not going to ask why, she left or was extricated from Pennsylvania to Arizona.
That's great.
And she came down here in about 1996 where she became a dispatcher, trainee. And she was making a whopping $10.07 an hour. And I should make a point, as a dispatcher, they are the most unrecognized, unappreciated human beings on earth and in the police department until we need them. They take all the abuse from people that call in, they take all the abuse from the officers that talk 90 miles an hour and faster, shoot up a whole bunch of information that I can't even tell you what they said, and they jot it all down and keep records of it. But they do one heck of a job for $10.07 an hour. That's not today's standard, but... Anyway, she did that job for a while and then eventually in 2004, for some crazy reason, decided to become a trainer and started training other dispatchers. She did that for a number of years and then got promoted to be a senior telecommunications, police telecommunications person in 2010, which she's been doing ever since then. And she continues to serve and train the news dispatches that we have. And the city manager is well aware that, I've been here just shy of 15 years, maybe 15 and a half years, we have never had our communications center at full capacity to our table organization yet.
Wow.
It's such a hard job that these people do that emotionally and psychologically, there are exceptions, they have a hard time staying longer. But to say that you've been a dispatcher for 25 years, 30 years, is very commendable and they did one heck of a job, so.
Yes.
I'm not going to go through this because I know you're going to introduce your family members here, but I'm going to let you look at this tomorrow and then we can talk.
Oh. Uh-oh.
Anyway, on behalf of the Police Department, I'm very happy to say, Celeste, on behalf of the men and women of the Police Department, this certificate of appreciation is in recognition of your 25 years of dedication to the Apache Junction Police Department, specifically the Communications Division. Your 25 years of service in this position of telecommunication officer and senior telecommunication officer is and has been unparalleled. Thank you so very much for your service to the citizens of Apache Junction and the Apache Junction Police Department. So, thank you very much. And knowing Celeste, I'm going to actually pass to the city manager, you have to stand up here with him, but I'm sure she's going to want to address you all for a couple of seconds. But, city manager, Mr. Paul.
Not done yet. Some more. Would love to hear from you too if you'd like, but we also, Celeste is one of a kind. And Chief has done a great job of articulating the great work that, in the stability that's there, in terms of training and wisdom that just created over time, where every nook and cranny isn't helping our streets stay safe. So, for 25 years, this is just some tokens of appreciation, but nowhere near what you mean to us. 25 years of service, 40 hours of paid time off.
Denied.
Yep, denied. That's a direct order, Celeste, you don't have to worry about it.
She's earned that.
Yeah, congratulations on reaching 25 years of service. And then we have a plaque that I'd like to read as well. With deep appreciation from the City of Apache Junction and thanks for 25 years of service to our community, the City of Apache Junction, Celeste, thank you.
Thanks. We have nowhere to hide for the photos. We can't get out of them. Try not to photobomb them.
You don't have to say anything? I've never been lost for words like that. Just tell me what to say. I just want to thank everybody for this wonderful evening. It wasn't something I was expecting. I enjoyed the time there at the PPG. Whenever I do reach there, I've been missing. Michelle?
Oh.
And I want to thank my sister, Andrea, for being here. She's my biggest supporter. She got me to move out here, that's the problem. I'm not original. Am I for a step from this step? But please pardon me. I think I could be there. Thank you.
Okay, announcements or current events from council members? Brayden, start with you.
Thank you. So, wanted to highlight, earlier this year, traditionally the last Sunday of every January for the last four, well, three years, this would have been the fourth, we have the annual AJ Kids Idol, but with COVID, we had to postpone it and many people were saying that we canceled it. And, well, we held fast and we sure did not cancel it. But it's coming up here in just, I think, two weeks now, on May 2nd, at Mountain View Lutheran Church, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And we've got a great group of kids, all local here in Apache Junction, or attend one of our schools here, who are going to be performing and stuff. It's just a really great opportunity. The mayor is going to be one of the judges, as well as Kami Garcia, who's on our school board, and a couple of other people. Just a really, really great opportunity to see the tremendous talent that our kids have. They always have a great time and every year, former council member Struble and I walk away just blown away at the level of talent that they continue to raise that far. So, we're really happy that we do get to have this event, so please do come out and support it and our kiddos, so. And then, of course, every month, we have the First Friday up at the East Valley Shopping Center, so the northwest corner of Phelps and Apache Trail. This month, their local nonprofit is the Superstition Community Food Bank, so they are asking that everybody bring a canned good for the collection. It's going to be on Friday, April 30th, from 5:30 to 7:30, and then Saturday, May 1st, from 10:00 AM to 2:00. A really great opportunity to check out some of the local businesses in that plaza, as well as some of the other vendors and things like that, so please come out and support that.
All right.
Great. I just wanted to be, to share this information with everybody. This is not a city-sponsored event, however, this is an open house put on by our previous mayor, Jeff Sertie, now our county supervisor. It's an open house across the street at the county complex. It's going to be on April 29th from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. There's going to be a lot of different county groups there. There's going to be Justice of the Peace, which was our previous mayor as well. Adult probation, as you can see, many other county offices will be participating, so I invite you guys to come.
Oh, here we are. Once again, on this Sunday, the Salvation Army is hosting the showers for the homeless, anyone that needs one. This keeps growing and I'd like to personally thank the Salvation Army for hosting this. It's something that, I don't know if many people are aware, but homeless did have the ability to shower once a week at the Multi-Gens Center, and this has kind of helped with that cause to continue, so.
Okay.
Tess?
There's a couple of things that are happening every other week and weekly at Table of Grace Church, 555 West Apache Trail. Every other Friday, there'll be one, this Friday, April 23rd, is Open Mic. That's also an event that's open to the community, but it's geared towards the youth in our community. You can come and sing, you can play instruments, tell jokes. It's really an opportunity for our youth in our community to come out and shine. And we've, it's been a full house every Friday when we have it, so April 23rd, this Friday, and then from that, it's every other Friday, and it starts at 6:00 PM. There's some food available for $5. You can get a hot dog and a drink with that. And it's really great to just come out and see the talent in our community that we have, of all ages really, but the young people really blow us away. Also, there's a new group starting at the Table of Grace. It's called Celebrate Recovery. And it may sound like it's for, you know, alcohol and drug addiction, but it goes a little bit deeper than that. These groups are going to meet on Tuesdays at 1:30. We have a group, breakout group for men and women at 1:30, and then at 6:00 PM, worship and testimonies. And this is really about all aspects of life. It touches hurts, hangups, and habits. And so, it digs pretty deep, and a lot of us have different things that we struggle with in life. It could be anything, and it's really helpful. So, Celebrate Recovery on Tuesdays at 1:30 and at 6:00 PM, Table of Grace, 555 West Apache Trail.
Okay, thank you. City managers report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to share an update on an item that's been worked on with our code compliance manager, Victor, just last month. Something interesting about this area is that these properties are actually divided into eight different property owners. And so, it's one of those situations where the property owners each don't go, you know, it's nobody's problem. And so, Victor's been working on this area to get it, and he handled it personally, was able to get every house on the block to get median, the median cleaned up. One of the unintended and positive outcomes of this is it got the neighbors to work together. And so, we were very successful, and as I call it, the double win, where you can get the neighbor to come out and help, help be a part of it. So, just wanted to share that positive news out of code compliance this week, a little before and after. And that concludes my report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Since we have no old business, we'll go on to new business. Presentation of professional agreement with the Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce for operation of the local visitor center. Janine?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Janine Salley, Economic Development Director for the city. So, here tonight to talk about an important service that we have provided for our visitors over the years in the community. We've long contracted for a center where we could have our residents and visitors and seasonal guests, kind of go to a one-stop shop, learn about what's in the area, what activities are happening, what local goods and services we have available to us. And the contract we currently have is with the Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce. It is, the term ends June 30th, so. Goal of the visitor center, the council has always found it really important to have the center here. It's existed as far back as I can remember, so it predates me. It's not only convenient for our residents and our visitors, but it also helps to elevate awareness of the area. So, if people are in Arizona and they find out there's a visitor center nearby, they tend to stop while they're here, they may grab something to eat, they'll fill up their tank of gas, so it does help to promote and boost the local economy. Now, in the past, to secure these visitor center services, we have always issued a request for qualifications. We would put that out there, and then any party that was interested in providing this type of service would submit a bid for consideration. Back in 2018, the city council made some changes to the procurement code, and it essentially created a list of exemptions for professional services. And one of those exemptions was for visitor center services and marketing efforts. So, what that means is that we no longer have to issue that request for qualifications and do a bid, but instead, what we are required to do now is to identify potential providers of this type of service in the community. We can approach them and assess their level of interest, and then we work with them if they're available or interested to come up with some terms for a contract, to negotiate an agreement. So, with the current contract for services, as I mentioned, expiring in June, it's time again to start looking for a provider. And what we have done is utilized the Arizona Office of Tourism as a resource for us to identify providers. And the reason we do that is that they have an accredited visitor information center program, and they essentially kind of vet providers that want to provide this type of service. And they have established some guidelines at the state level. The centers have to meet those guidelines. And then they also use this program to, for visitor services, to provide information to, on the website, either Visit Arizona website, in all of their marketing and promotional brochures that they put out, they always list all the centers that are available throughout the state. So, we figured that was probably a pretty good place to start, and so that's what we've done. But we also did consider if there were other potential locations or businesses or facilities in Apache Junction that might be able to provide this type of service as well, we would never want to exclude someone simply because they are not an accredited center. So, at this time, staff's recommendation is to contract for these services with the Apache Junction Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. And we've got a number of reasons that we think that's a good option. They have been the single service provider of this service since it has been, since its inception. I think they've been the only ones to provide visitor center services for us. They are one of the accredited centers, so they're recognized by the state of Arizona. As I mentioned, they have been providing these services for quite some time, so clearly they have the ability to perform at a high standard. And they're located in the heart of our downtown. I think that's important because it drives people into where we have shopping and dining. In economic development, we've long struggled with how do we get people who are driving through town to stop in town, and that's one way to do that. They do get shining reviews from online venues, so if you ever go look up, you know, just any of the reviews on Google or Yelp or anything, you'll find that they are most often highly regarded. And frankly, for the allocation of funding that we have available to provide to a center, we feel that they give us a truly incredible value. So, you're all probably familiar with the current visitor center. It's at 567 West Apache Trail, just in case anyone viewing is not. Here are a few photos. It's always very bright in there, clean and inviting. Of course, there's always smiling faces at the front desk. They have tremendous visitor volunteers and staff there. We so appreciate all the hard work that they do because we really feel that they make all the guests who walk through that door to Apache Junction feel very welcome, so we appreciate all their hard work. We did work with Denise Hart, the CEO, to negotiate what we do believe is a fair and reasonable term for this contract. Denise worked then with her board, and they have agreed to move forward with the new agreement with the following terms. They requested a three-year agreement that will start, again, July 1 with the new fiscal year. That would represent a 4% increase over the current contract that we have with them. And then years two and three, they have also requested a 4% increase per year, and you can see the dollar amounts there on the screen. They've additionally proposed to be included two one-year automatic extensions, and those, each two would have a 4% increase. So, staff respectfully requests that you approve these recommendations so that we can secure visitor center services for years to come. And my intention is to come back to you on May 4th with whatever it is you choose so we can get a contract approved. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I also want you to know that both Denise and Steve Byfield, Denise, the CEO, and Steve, the Board Chair, are here to answer any questions as well.
Have any questions?
I have a question, Your Honor. You mentioned in 2018 that there were some changes to the contract. How was that done? How was the changes where, so that the city no longer has to go out for bids, that they can just go and look and kind of pick who might be available? How was that done? I don't, don't remember.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, it wasn't the code, oh, actually, it was the code that changed, it was under 3-7, Article 3-7, which allows for exemptions to the procurement code. So, for, for example, do you have to bid it out? Well, you don't because we made it a special exemption, like we do some other areas. And we can do that under law. And I think the reasoning was, on this one, there was a long-term struggle, as long as I've been here with Chamber Commerce bidding, and it was very difficult, and we didn't have to have it that way. And there's not very many providers. I think there was another one for a number of years, but before that, I think the Chamber was the only provider of those types of services. The city managers, I think, not just this city manager, but other city managers have talked about, or did talk about, making that service available through staff, but they weighed it, and it was just too expensive to do that. And it's, we get a better, get a better deal with using the Chamber. So, that's really what it was. So, it's not in the contract, but it was a change in the procurement code. Which is done by who? The city council approved that.
So, in 2018, the city council approved the change in the procurement code? Thank you.
Any other questions? Guess we'll see you on the 4th?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, consideration on agreement with Centrumark Corporation for the city complex roof recoding. Oh, Heather, almost went to the wrong person.
You're fine. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Heather Hodgman, Administrative Services Manager. Tonight, we're here to talk about the roof recoding of City Hall itself. Just a little bit of background, some roofs that we've already recoded was the IT Building, 2014, library, we had two phases, and it was completed in 2015. Our multi-generational center in 2016, and two years ago, development services roof in 2019. This is just a map to see, section one is development services. So, this contract would actually entail management services, section two, council chambers, section four, city attorney, section three, HR, section five, and the municipal court, which is section six. Centrumark is, we are utilizing a Mohave contract, which is a cooperative contract. They are providing a 10-year labor and material warranty part of this contract. Just recently, on the library roof, we actually had a five-year inspection. So, they do come out, they check everything, making sure that we're fine. Our roofs aren't leaking, and we're good. So, they do do that every five years, just to double-check and if we have any issues. If we do need to call them out, they are really receptive, and they'll contact us immediately and schedule an appointment. So, quickly in conclusion, staff recommends entering into an agreement with Centrumark Corporation in the amount of $78,000 for the roof recoding at City Hall. Any questions?
Okay, we'll have a discussion.
Heather?
Yes, ma'am.
So, this is set to last us 10 years?
The warranty is 10 years, yes.
Your Honor?
But could last 16 years, correct?
It definitely can. We're just going to monitor, because I know we've had some leaking issues in one of the areas at City Hall, and with all the changes in HVAC units, we just want to make sure everything's sealed up right.
And I get, so if they come out in five years and discover, or at any point in time, then it's covered under the warranty? We won't have to pony up additional money at that point?
The labor material.
The labor, okay. Thank you.
Your Honor. Heather, so, for the, when the public hears it, $78,000, and they look at the pictures, they might think that this is just a roof painting or, you know, can you explain a little bit more about the roof coating and what exactly it does to protect the building or the roof? It looks like just white paint, like somebody could go up there and roll some.
It does. It's actually, I can't, it's a poly-type layer.
Is it foam?
It's, it's not foam. I wish I had.
Let me, maybe I could jump in a little bit. One of the items in the lead certification process is that when we learned on the lifecycle costs related to the HVAC units and the ability to keep your facility either cool or hot, is this roof was actually one of the major points we got for that type of facility. And what we learned is if a little bit of investment ahead of time on this roof that's white, that deflects the heat, and also is a different type of material, can also help protect the ability of, the cost of our HVAC or electricity is utilized less. So, this is, this, we're hoping, this is, we budget for this, you know, we haven't done, this is the first time we've done it in 16 years, so it's about a $5,000 a year budget that we need to set aside to be able to do this in 15 to 16 years as well.
And then, Heather, you said they're pretty good when we have issues about coming out.
Yeah.
How, do you know, just ballpark, how often we've had to have them come out?
Well, they come out, they just came out for the five-year inspection, and so, we haven't had to call them out for any issues.
Any point.
Yeah.
I was, it just surprised me that they only come out every five years. I would have thought they'd come out once a year to check, just to kind of offset anything that looks like it could be problematic, so that it doesn't become problematic. It surprised me to hear for that price that they only come out every five years.
I know building maintenance keeps an eye on everything, and so if there's any issues, they will call them.
Mr. Mayor? Yes?
The scope of work is on Exhibit A, so I don't know if Matt could go to Exhibit A of the Centrumark agreement. And it's one page, and it lists the scope of what will be done, and also the quantity square footage.
Yeah. I just like to ask questions. I don't know if the public reads everything, but just, I mean, so they can, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was all I had.
I'm up next again.
I'm up next again.
Still coming up. There it is.
Did you want me to read it, or?
I'm good. Unless somebody else wanted it.
There it is.
The scope of work is for all the buildings, so what you see here is the exact same thing we'll be doing for every building.
Okay. Any other questions really?
I have one.
Yes.
You had mentioned, Councilmember Biggs had mentioned that what the warranty covers and what we'd have to additional cost, and you said the warranty covers labor and material or that would be our additional cost, labor and material?
It covers our labor and material.
So no dime out of pocket for 10 years?
That's our, that's our plan, but if something catastrophic happens, then obviously that would be a little bit different.
Certainly, if it got struck by lightning or something, and, right, right.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the agreement with CentiMark Corporation in an amount not to exceed $78,000 for the recoding of the city complex roof be approved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call?
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor, motion passes.
Okay, consideration to enter into a second amendment with JP, JB, excuse me, Superior Maintenance Services to cover the increased minimum wage compensation. Heather, again.
Again. Heather Hodgman, Administrative Services Manager. So janitorial services, we like to talk a little bit about them, give everybody a little bit more of a background on our services. So in 2017, we did have to hire them for emergency services, just because we were in between contracts. We did a request, a request for proposal in 2018, and then we awarded this contract in April of 2018. So this is a 10-year service contract is what we have that began in 2018. In October of just this last year, I came before you for a First Amendment, which increased the general janitorial cleaning for our parks and rec facilities. That included the restrooms at our parks and the trash removal at that time. This is coming forward to you with the Second Amendment to cover the increased Arizona minimum wage compensation per Prop 206. So in 2020, in January of 2020, the minimum wage did go up to $12, so our contract went up a little bit more, so that's why I'm before you right now. We haven't had any more of an increase. They haven't come back to us, but we have to increase the contract just to, for Proposition 206. So in conclusion, really quick, staff recommends entering into the second agreement with JB Superior Maintenance Services LLC for an increase of an additional $25,000 for the initial agreement, for the total of the agreement to be $300,000 a year. Any questions?
I do have questions.
Okay.
So the current amount right now that's been approved is 275,000 a year?
Correct.
Okay.
For just regular general janitorial, not the First Amendment for parks and rec facilities. That's a separate.
Okay.
And so my question again is for the public, if you can give us just a quick briefing of what this covers, materials supply, hours, maintenance, anything like that, because when the public sees that number, it, you know, they would think that it'd be cheaper to go in-house, honestly.
So it's the deep cleaning of our carpets, it's the scrubbing of our floors, it's stripping and re-waxing our vinyl floors, it's cleaning bathrooms, removing trash, dusting, those types of things. I'm sorry?
Windows?
Dusting around the windows. If we need extra cleaning, yes, ma'am. The high windows, we have those cleaned as well. High shelf dusting in the library, because they have over 10 feet, so that includes that, you know, that as well. And any, any janitorial types, we have some person, one person that's dedicated only to PD, just because of their 24-hour needs, so someone's dedicated just for that department.
That was my second question, is what, what buildings or what areas of the city departments it covers?
Every single one. Public Works, Animal Control, this entire building, PD, Multi-Gen, IT Building, like every single one of our city facilities.
Heather, how many employees is that? Do we know?
I don't have an exact amount, but I'm going to say anywhere around 10. And that includes two supervisors, and they are hands-on supervisors.
Okay. Has there been, I remember when this item came up in 2018, but I don't remember all of the discussion, has there been any conversation about bringing this in-house? And is there potential cost savings to bring it in-house at some point?
We have, we used to have it in-house before my time. I round, I want to say 2004, 2005, but I could be wrong on that year. And it was harder. It was a little bit more problematic to, to manage in, with the staff. We were losing staff, we couldn't get people to stay on, so it became a little bit more problematic. And we've talked about it. We used to have someone that was a city employee that was at the police department, but it became easier for us to have an outside service that would come in here. It was more cost efficient for city staff as well to handle of our cleaning of our facilities.
Mr. Mayor?
I want to remember, so.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Brian.
So we've doubled the square footage at the time, and I want to say the budget at the time was about 187,000 to do it internally. We had about three to four staff members, and it was very difficult to hire and maintain staff. What I found also interesting about this process of having, it's kind of, you know, going out to the private sector, doing a bid and getting, getting a third party, but there is progression within their company to be able to move up and to be able to move into different positions. What we found is there's, when you do it just for the city, for three or four employees, for, you know, 20,000 or 30,000 square feet, now we have 60,000 square feet. It just was difficult in terms of that. So from a 300,000 to a $300,000 bid, and to go out to the private sector and have them cover, I know from my standpoint, it's been, it's been really good for the city, and my expectation, if we were to go out and do that, it might be twice as much as that.
And that covers the equipment and supplies, correct?
Yeah, we don't have to maintain those, that's theirs.
Yeah, you don't have to store the stuff, you don't have to.
Right.
So do they come out every day? Three days a week? Once a week?
No, they come out every day. Animal Control is a little bit different, because they have different hours, so I think they probably do six days, and Public Works is six days. You have different facilities, so Multi-Gen and Library is probably six days, Police Department is five. So it just depends on the openings of the facilities.
So when you say they strip and wax our floors, they?
That's on an as-needed basis. So just recently, we just had our Public Works facility stripped and waxed, and it's probably been a year and a half.
So, and then the windows are kind of in, you know, need, as we need to do them, they'll do them?
We try to do it twice a week, twice a year, after monsoon season and around this time, I think we just did them. So we try to keep them as clean as possible.
Okay, so, you know, you take the windows, the stripping, the floors, you know, the heavy, the heavy time-consuming jobs, it boils down to vacuuming and emptying trashcans and wiping desks off and things like that.
Cleaning bathrooms, disinfecting everything like that.
Well, I'm getting at, you're paying $25,000 a month, someone to clean out a trashcan and vacuum a floor, when some of the more strenuous jobs are, you know, they're, they're looked at once a year. I just, I just find it a ridiculous amount of money for, for what is actually happening in the grand scope of things, considering the real time-consuming and money factors are not done but once a year.
I'm more than happy to provide the scope of work, so you can see all the details of the cleaning that is required for this contract. I apologize, I didn't bring that entire scope, but I'm more than happy to provide that.
But that includes employee wages, insurance, accountability. If something happens, it's accountability, they, I mean, it's, I agree. When I saw that number, and, you know, I'd forgotten, it's been a few years, I was like, ah, and I get it, but when you consider what they're responsible for, what they do, how often they do it, it takes, it's, like Bryant said, we'd, good luck trying to find somebody to do that, to that quality, and then now the city takes on that, you got the insurance of the employee, you've got, I don't know, benefits, you know, the supplies, and so they provide all of that, and sometimes you, you got a way out, you know, which is the better avenue, so.
And then too, it's the, we can point your fingers back to us as voters, we increased minimum wage, and so that's, that's something.
Yeah, so that's what's attributing to this conversation tonight is directly attributed to that. And when do we, when do we go out to bid again? And that would be another, you know, opportunity to talk to council about a cost-benefit analysis.
Seven years. It is a 10-year contract.
And that's another question. What was, what is the purpose of a 10-year contract? I tend to hesitate doing contracts for so long because we tend to be locked into them or there's, you know, if there's challenges, we have to break those and deal with that process. I mean, a three-to-four-year contract seems more reasonable than a 10-year contract to that, so.
We couldn't get anybody to do it was one of the biggest problems. We couldn't get any, we went out, I remember, we went out a few times, and you guys came back, and it was like, uh, we don't have anybody, we're going to just have to fill in. It's been a struggle, and I didn't mean to take away your answer, but I remember that those conversations were long, because, you know, these are the taxpayers' dollars, and we need to be cognizant of that, and they see those numbers, and so absolutely, they need to, they need to know. They're getting a good bang for their dollar.
Heather, what's the, do you know offhand total square footage of all of the buildings?
I don't know. Sorry. You said 60.
Well, we could get that for you.
I have, I have it, but I just not.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, we'd have to, we'd be just guessing. We need to get a real number.
Well, and I was, to me, what I was thinking, for me to vacuum 30,000 square foot every day, I mean, you said they're here every day.
I don't even like vacuuming my 1,300 square feet.
You know, and that, I was just trying to proportion it into the additional increase to the actual total amount of work covered, so. If you don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, sorry, it's just a.
We'll get that, we'll send that out.
Yeah. And again, equipment, you're talking mops and buckets and scrubbies and gloves and, and, you know, to the toilet paper and the, all of that, it, it adds up. It's not cheap.
Any others? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that the Second Amendment with JB Superior Maintenance Services for an additional amount of 25,000 to compensate for the increase of Arizona's minimum wage be approved.
Seconded.
Roll call?
Councilmember Schroeder?
No.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
I have a question. Can I ask a question first before I vote? What would happen if we didn't vote for this? Where would we be with the janitorial service, and how would the city go forward?
Well, we'd have to arrange something with the current provider, and it would be, now that you didn't vote, I don't know what would happen. It would be difficult to get a lower rate, that's for sure.
The discussion would probably go to a reduction in service. So we'd probably, I don't know, I'd have talked to Heather, but the number would be 275,000. That'd be our rate that we would pay them, and then they would talk to us about a reduction in service, and then we'd have to come back to you and let you know what that is.
And then being, if, you know, if they were to say, look, we're not going to continue to do this, the struggle that we had to get a company, we'd really, we'd be in a pickle.
We're in the middle of a vote, so it's kind of hard to.
I just needed that clarified. My answer, my, my vote is yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Six to one, motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay. Consideration for Resolution Number 21-16 for installation of streetlights within the Street Improvement District Number 2021-02 Coyote Crossing.
And you can actually read the other title too, if you'd like.
Oh, okay. Consideration for Resolution Number 21-17, the installation of streetlights within the Street Light Improvement District Number 2021-01 Goldfield.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson. Good evening, councilmembers. Emile Schmidt, City Engineer, let me get to you.
I'm sure where yours was, Emile.
There we go. I'm back here for the continuation of the creation of two streetlight districts here within the city. If you recall, I was here a little over a month ago on Monday evening, and it had been a long time, many, many years since we've done a streetlight district, improvement district, and I went over the process that we were going to do. Came back the following night to do the first of three resolutions for this process for both of these subdivisions, and the first resolution was for the intent to form a district, which was approved by you on the night of the 16th. So I'm here this evening for the second of the three resolutions for this process, and that is to formally request for the installation of the district and to formalize the, the creation of it. So the resolution, the first resolution, the applicant came in with an intent, we would like to do a district, you approved it now, you as the counselor saying, okay, let's go ahead and create this district. So that's what we're doing this evening for these two. It's, it's kind of a formality at this point, a step that needs to be done, and I will be back in the very near future for the third of the three resolutions, which is the budget resolution. And that one, we'll talk a little bit about the money involved, the cost involved, and setting, setting that up. So kind of straightforward. I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you have any comments or anything regarding this second resolution.
Any comments, questions? Okay. See you none. Do I have a motion for the 20-16?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that Resolution Number 21-16, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, ordering the installation of streetlights within the streetlight, within Street Lighting Improvement District Number 2021-02 Coyote Crossing be approved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Do I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
All right, can I have a motion for Number 21-17?
Your Honor, I have a question first. On the resolution, it says 21-13?
17.
It is 17?
Yep.
Okay. Your Honor, I move that Resolution Number 21-17, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Apache Junction, Arizona, ordering the installation of streetlights within the streetlights, within Street Lighting Improvement Districts, Number 2021-01 Gold View be approved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Do I have a roll call?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes, and I screwed up. I said Goldfield, didn't I? I'm sorry.
Your motion passes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No counsel, direct to staff, selection of meeting dates proposed, the selection of dates and times located for the budget work session and public hearing, and adoption of tentative and final budgets. Matt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is just our annual budget dates for the work sessions, as well as the budget adoption, according to the calendar that's in the agenda packet. I can pull it up if you'd like, but it's, it's pretty standard according to the legal in state statute, they, they outline what, what and when we have to adopt the tentative budget and the final budget. And you have an example motion before you to help you there.
All right, do I have any discussion from council on the budget meetings? Okay, do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that a budget work session be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 3, 2021, in the city council chambers, and that a public hearing and adoption of the tentative budget
budget be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 17, 2021, in the city council chambers, and that a public hearing and adoption of the final budget be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, June 14, 2021, in the city council chambers be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call?
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
All right, case. Meeting dates and times and locations for our upcoming meetings. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM for Tuesday, May 4, 2021, be held at 300 East Superstition Boulevard in Apache Junction, Arizona, and other meetings be scheduled if necessary.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call?
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nessar?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, Your Honor.
Okay, call to the public. I would like to remind everyone that the call to the public is a courtesy, is not required by law. At this time of the public is for them to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Requests to speak for must then been presented and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in the discussion of the issues presented, but may respond to criticism, and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly, or place this matter on future agenda for council discussion. There is a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and I have two. And the first one is Rich Walters, a winner, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I first and foremost want to thank you for what you do, and for allowing us to keep our RV structure with the extinguishment of 18th Avenue. And my thank you goes to each and every member. I understand that it's a vote. I understand you have a very hard job to do. I respect that job. And I, like all of you, want our city to grow and grow responsibly. And so I, I support you, I support what you do. And I want to thank you personally for what you do. I provided you a copy of a letter that I wrote for Rachel Schott, and provided Mike Weaver. And I was happy to go give it to her, and her comment was, "We don't get many of these." And I don't suppose they do. Again, I know how hard she worked on this. She was very impartial. She was just factual. And I respected her work. I respect your work. The second thing is I provided you a, a letter that outlines, I know there's a big controversy on cargo trailers. Well, I happen to have one, and a couple of you visited with me, and you've, you've been provided pictures. I again provided a three-ring binder that has the photographs, and it has a copy of a complaint there for my significant other, and she's certainly not too happy about it, 'cause it says right on it, criminal complaint. Seems a little harsh. But we would like to have a little bit of a debate going on, on cargo trailers. Obviously, we would like to have it not extinguished, but rather, we've been studying real estate, being it's personal property, it doesn't have to be extinguished. And in my opinion, if I were on the council, I wouldn't want to extinguish it. It's a utility easement, it might come in handy in the future. But an encroachment allowance means that in the event that someone wants to put a line in or something, it has to go. And I would do that in a New York second. So I have no problems with that. And anyways, that's all I have to say. Again, I just want to thank you for what you do and your consideration. Again, thank you.
Mr. Schroder?
Good evening. George Schroder, 2444 West Virginia. Sorry about my throat here. We got some serious issues. We gotta take care of them. You, not them, you have the power to do that. They have access to $500 billion. They're not helping our city get any of that for our homeless, for our streets. They have access. All they gotta do is ask for it, and, and we can get it. Next. I go around my neighborhood, they're making progress at 2603, the one with the trailer, camping trailer, to be exact. We need to do a, you have a disagree from me, a direction of staff, and see how this was procreated, because that was sold in 2015. And that grandfather clause should have never existed there. So somebody made a faux pas, okay? The trailer's gotta go. It never should have been there in the first place. It's illegal. Mr. Martinez, please address this issue. Ms. Wilson is never gonna do it. You want a better code enforcement? She needs to leave. She's incompetent. Next. I go around my neighborhood five, six times a week. I look at some of our neighbors, and they're getting their landscaping done. Hmm, who could that be? Wow, a cactus friend. Four properties are getting their landscaping done. Hmm, 2514 has a landscape business. Hmm, the owner, Ms. Knox, is on board of adjustments, which Mr. Biggs helped her get there. Mr. Powell helped him get there, he helped her get on the board of adjustments. She's got several code invited, uh, uh, problems. She's got people still living in the trailers in the back of their property. So we asked Mr. Powell to look into it. Bad idea. He's not gonna, he don't care. So we need to have, you know, another person look and see what's going on here. It's illegal. It's wrong. It's stupid. So are you, are you paying the department trucks near the property, or is it for free? How, so please, tell us how that works, Mr. Biggs. Thank you.
Okay. Council, were there any comments? Can we look into some of his complaints?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, we can look into those.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we'll report back on some of the complaints the best we can. Are you talking about Mr. Winters, or?
Yep, both, both.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I, I hope that when, you, you, we're gonna have staff look into that, and you'll look into that. I hope there's something that we can reasonably negotiate there with Mr. Winters.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll adjourn. Thank you.